Welcome to the Wednesday, May 28, 2025 Finance Committee Meeting.
Another round.
Good evening. Welcome to the Wednesday, May 28, 2025 City Council Finance Committee Meeting. Chairman Viola, before we begin, I'd like to remind everybody, please silence your cell phones and note that this meeting is being recorded. And where we are in the council chambers, please rise if you can for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nobody wants to sit with the mayor.
First on our agenda tonight is Inspection Services. Commissioner Quinn. Good evening.
Good evening Chairman Viola, and members of the City Council. Tom Quinn, Building Commissioner. What you have in front of you is my budget, pretty well self-explanatory. Salary accounts are the salary accounts for the seven full-time positions within the Inspection Services office. One adjustment with that was our temporary help account went from $10,000 to a requested $12,500. Twofold. One is with the contracts being settled, there were some adjustments in salaries, and for a few years, the $10,000, we were just barely getting by. So I'm hopeful with the additional $2,500. God forbid, nothing happens during the fiscal year, that I won't have to request any more money within that particular account. I mean, that, most of you are aware of that, funds my part-time plumbing and electrical inspectors when the full-time gentlemen are out on vacation or out on leave for some reason. So that's the salary accounts. Maintenance accounts, they're all level funded, with the addition of a new line item for $3,800 for clothing and boots for the inspectors, and that was a result of the collective bargaining agreement being settled with the City Hall employees. Reflective budget maintenance accounts, again, all level funded. I appreciate when we were working with the mayor's office, he took the time to listen to the needs of the department, and, you know, I am happy with these being level funded, and I would request the City Council consider the same. Any reduction in these accounts would impact the services we provide to everybody in the city. So it just, you know, it's not a high level budget, but it works. We got the job done with it, so I, you know, respectfully ask that you leave it as is, you know, when you're really shopping on the pencils. With that, if you have any questions?
Councilor DeMambo.
Thank you Chairman. Inspector Quinn, Yard Department and yourself, you do an incredible job throughout the city. You're all over the city. You have numerous inspections, you know, going on. There's probably hundreds on your docket. My question to you is, and I thank you, and I thank you for your team's support. You've been very supportive in Ward Six, and I appreciate everything, you and your team, and the time and effort and support that I get from Yard Department. I appreciate everything. My question to you is, being with ADUs and all of the industry that seems to be percolating up in these apartment buildings and complexes, and so many projects going on and additions, I know there's yourself and Joe LaCoco canvassing the city. My question is, you have a line item here for another inspector. Do we see that in the very near future? Do you see that you have enough, and will you need more, even if this position is filled at this point?
The last two years, let me go back a little bit. Two years ago, nobody really wanted to work for the government because the pay was low. The pay is very compatible now. The economy and the private sectorism is good. So with the second position, last year, we cut it in half and we used consultants, and it worked fine. However, we're coming into a lot more issues over the next few years that are critical. The ADUs is one example. The floodplain ordinance, which you will be speaking in committee on, that's going to impact a lot in the daily operations. So I'm going back to the two full-time inspectors, and I hope to have that position provided, everything works, you know, by the end of September, you know, to have that filled. I mean, summertime, it gets a little, you know, offbeat, but by the end of September, I'd like to have that second position in the office. I think it's critical for the daily operations, and also the long term.
Absolutely.
It just, we need, you know, younger people to get involved, because I'm not going to be there forever. You know, I think, you know, after 38, 39 years, it makes you reflect. But we need people that know the city, know the intricacies of some of these special permitted projects, and develop the history of some of the properties, especially in the North Woburn and the East Woburn corridor. You know, I think it's important that somebody coming in will need to know that the Woburn Village site has restrictions on it. I'll learn that. I think it's important that 316 New Boston Street, the Fairfield property, how that was developed. So if things come in the future when we're not here, they'll be smart enough to go back and look at the historical data, you know, to see what was done. And I mean, that was one lesson I learned 20, 20-plus years ago. You know, the files tell the story for the property, and it's something that you have to instill in people to do their due diligence and research.
And also, I mean, you also do quite a bit with ordinance enforcement, too.
Yes.
And that's why, you know, I asked this question. I know you, we talk all the time, you and I, we talk multiple times a week on numerous projects that are going on, and lots of questions that you answer for me, and I appreciate it. But a lot of that, too, is also property, you know, nuisance properties, so on and so forth, ordinance infractions. So there's also the policing factor, as well as, as well as the inspectional. That's why I asked the question. Do you have enough to canvas and to keep that canvas going and the policing going?
With the additional person, it's gonna give us a little more breathing room. Instead of a response time of, you know, five to seven days on the nuisance things, we want to get back to the three-day average that we were running for, you know, many, many years. You know, we've had to adjust the playbook with staffing. You know, everything is, everything has a place. Everything gets addressed, but it isn't, some things aren't as quick as they used to be. And we want to get back to that within the next year.
Understandable. You guys do a hell of a job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
President Dillon.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinn, as Councilor DeMambo just laid it out, you guys are busy. Got a lot of work going on. And I will say, I personally appreciate, not only you, your entire staff. Throughout the city, I hear from people that go in there, they're always treated professionally, and given the right advice, what to do, where to go, and how to get it done. And that's what we need.
No, thank you.
I personally appreciate their guidance, and the help that you've given me over the years. Made me a better city councillor. It's a lot. We, we deal with a lot of landlords, as Dave Pagetti pointed out, 47% of our housing stock is rentals. And a lot of them are good, but the few bad ones sure do keep us busy, don't they?
They do. They do.
And maybe now's a good public announcement. The ones in my ward that are bad, I'm watching you, and I appreciate your help on it.
Well, thank you.
No one deserves to be bad by a house that's a problem, or a building that's a problem.
Yeah. I mean, and again, it's, it's the team approach. You know, we all work together downstairs. I think, you know, the secretarial staff, the administrative staff, the inspectors, we communicate every day, and communication is key to the operation of the department.
Well, again, I appreciate everything your staff and you do, and continue good success. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilor Mercer.
Hey Tom. Just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for always taking my calls, always, as frequent as they are. And, you know, the mention of nuisance properties, I've only had a couple that have come to that in Ward Five, and I'm grateful for that. But they do take time. There's a process, and the law has to be followed. And sometimes, that can be hard for people to understand, but there is a process. And as long as we follow it, we'll get there.
Yes. I would agree with you.
And I, and I want to thank you for always reminding me of that, and going over the laws, because I can be sometimes a little, has anybody used the word impatient with my name? I don't think so. Anyway, I appreciate everything you do, and your team does, and thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Councilor Toro.
Thank you. I'm gonna echo the sentiments of the other three councils that just spoke, and say thank you as well. But I also have a unique perspective on the building department, being a city councillor, but also a contractor as well. And I can say that Woburn Inspection Services is, even being down one inspector, is always very prompt in their return calls for inspections, always there, available. The admin staff, Vicki and Gail, obviously yourself with the city council, but also with building questions. Joe, I don't think it's an issue or a question on whether or not we're gonna reduce your budget by any means. I think you'd have full support when you are ready to add that second building inspector. Or, I know you love the idea of using the temporary help, or at least, you know, increasing that and bringing somebody in, because I think, like Councilor DeMambo said, when the ADU start to hit, you know, the overlay district, things build over there, the floodplain, all that stuff, I think you will need some more help. And we certainly don't want to inundate your office too much, you know, and drive out the, the staff that you have there now, you know. So I think you have the full, you have my full support, and I'm sure you have the full support of this council. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. But just, again, with the help, you know, we're at a point where, you know, we gotta get back to where we were a few years ago. And I, and I think now, the market's a lot more competitive, and I think there's a lot more draw to working for the city of Woburn. I mean, the salaries are in line with municipalities this size. You know, it's a good department, and keep in mind, you know, we are going out of the basement. We're moving next door in about a month, you know. So, you know, building department won't be in the basement anymore, you know, we'll be at street level. And I mean, that, you know, office conditions, you know, there's a lot that plays into these jobs. And I, and I think it's just, when we get to that point in a few months, I'm hoping I have a very, very large pool of candidates.
Councilor DeMers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just want to thank you and your department. I won't go into, I won't be as, I won't repeat a lot of what was already said, because I know that you appreciate that, and I think all my colleagues feel the same way for all your help. One thing I would ask is, with the ADUs, I would hope that you have already a plan in mind in the sense of logging how many applications we get, because I would love to actually see that when, you know, it's up and running for a year or so. And that way, we can also report back to our legislative delegation to show them the impact, because it's an unfunded mandate, in my opinion, when it comes down to the amount of work that the city of Woburn's gonna have to do, once these applications come rolling in. So I just want to be able to have that statistic, and I, I know you'll probably have something like that, just so you can report back to us to see how, how the community's reacting to it. And I know, you know, everybody, we always hear these, you know, worst-case scenarios. Oh, everybody's gonna want, there's gonna be a lot of cost that goes into these things for every, for every petitioner that's gonna want to do it. So I'd just be interested, after, after a certain amount of time, if we could get a report back from your office as to how many petitions we get for that.
There is language within the state regs that Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development, or whatever they call themselves these days, does require it. But that will be factored in to monthly permitting. We track every type of permit we issue, we track it monthly. Like, if you ask me for the month of March, how many solar permits, I can get you the information in about 10 seconds.
Great.
If we're at the computer. So sheet metal permits, everything like that, we, we track it monthly, because it does come up for unit counts. Like, right now, not to prolong this, but one-in-two-family housing right now is down.
Yep.
Multi-family right now is down. A year ago, we were way up. Two years ago, we were way, way up.
And I know some of our colleagues on the school committee have been in regular contact with you regarding what types of developments are in the works and so forth, and I think the ADUs will also help play a role in, in that determination in terms of the school population planning and so forth.
I mean, that is, I'm gonna use the word, it's uncharted territory right now. We have to see how this whole thing shakes out. And, and yes, the council passed it, but is it perfect? None of us know that. We're gonna take it as it is. We're gonna work through it. We may be back here for some minor adjustments, two months from now, six months from now, maybe never. It's, again, it's, it's a work in progress. It's, it's a fluid thing. And it's unfortunate that last August, when the mandate came down, there was no guidance.
Right. And I know-
And it's, and building officials throughout the Commonwealth have struggled with this.
And as a, as a chair of ordinance, I would commit to you that I'll, I'll try to be in regular contact with you, just to hear if-
Yep.
Things that are coming up for you or your staff, that you need us to address in the ordinance, that might not be, you know, totally, you know, locked in like we need it to be. And I'll be more than willing to advance that forward, to make sure that not only your office, but the, the city of Woburn is covered.
Yeah. It's appreciative. And I, again, I'm gonna be there to a point, but the, the concern I really feel for is, is the assessor's office, on how they're gonna assess these things. I don't know if more guidance, or if any guidance has come down to them. So again, it's, as you said, it's an unfunded mandate, and we're balancing, and I think the city as a whole is doing the best we can. And we'll continue to do the best.
I appreciate the work.
Thank you.
Tom, thank you for everything you and your department do. As one of the busiest departments in the city, I know you're always fielding calls from us, all times of the day and the night. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good.
Anybody else have any comments?
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks.
Second item on the agenda is Human Resources, on page 13 in our books. Director Healy? Good evening.
Hello. So our office is small, so we don't have a huge budget to play with, but I just want to take the opportunity to thank Karen, her office in our office. She keeps us going day-to-day, so I just want to take that opportunity, being a two-person office, she really allows us to keep the office open when I'm being pulled into meetings. So I wanted to make sure I appreciate her tonight. Tonight, we also want to thank Mark Silbati and Charlie Doherty, going through the collective bargaining agreements, and going through, being able to settle six of the seven contracts this year. That was a big part of our fiscal year in getting those done. And then, for the most part, we were able to maintain our wellness program, having classes offered to city and school employees for free through MIA. And we maintain the 6:00 AM health fridge through our grant. And so, looking ahead, we're just looking to have a small increase to the budget for $500 for our pre-employment physicals. Costs have increased a little bit, and we had over 50 hires this year. So just trying to maintain, being able to keep up with that. And also, looking ahead, we're, as the ADA coordinator, we're hoping to go through the grant process through the MOD for an ADA evaluation and transition plan, which is over 20 years outdated. So hoping to work with the, with the Commission on Disability with that over the next year. Kevin's working on the grant right now to submit that for the June 13 deadline. And also with the City Hall, an X building coming on, we're hoping to get some space for a break room with staff, and we'll be able to get a grant through MIA to kind of revamp that space, whatever space is designated for that. So looking forward to be able to do that for employees, and kind of get a space for them for lunch, since a lot of staff are going home for lunch, or eating at their desks, or in the cars, in their cars. So looking forward to being able to do that as well. So, budget-wise, nothing significant, but happy to answer any questions.
President Dillon.
Shawna, great job.
Thank you.
Again, you know, we as city council members probably don't have a lot that we deal with you guys, you and Karen, but everyone I talk to, from the public, municipality, employees, everyone's happy with what you do. I know it's a complicated deal, what you guys do, and you do it very well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Farula.
I share his sentiments. I think you rock. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilor DeMers.
Now, I just wanted to say thank you as a member of the Personnel Committee. I know we've had some big positions that we've hired in the last year, and your guidance and, and advice on many of those have gone a long way. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Shawna, thank you very much.
Thank you, Shawna.
Thank you, Shawna.
Next item on the agenda is the Recreation and Parks Department. Superintendent Mealy and Director Rory.
Page, Joe?
We're on page 55. Good evening.
Good evening. Stephen Mealy, new parks superintendent. I'm new to this, so my budget was basically done before I was appointed. What you see is what you get. Hopefully, it stays as is, and we can move forward, and next year-
Sorry, Parks is 58, I'm sorry.
I'll be part of this, a little bit more involved in this.
I don't want to leave you hanging up there.
Oh, thanks. Thanks. All new to me.
We did. We prepped the budget initially with, with Jim. Steve has inherited it. He's getting up to speed very quickly. I think one of the best pieces of evidence of what we have to look forward to is Monday on the Common Memorial Day. It looked fantastic.
It did.
And I know it was a collective effort. It was Parks, DPW. A lot of people pitched in, but Steve understood the significance of that task, and I think everyone was very much impressed.
Thank you.
So I think we have a lot to look forward to, and thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
You know, his, his budget is pretty much what it's been over the years. You know, there is an open position.
That's being filled in two weeks.
Being filled as we speak.
Yeah. I talked today. It's gonna be two weeks, probably. The Rec Commission's gotta approve the guy, and he'll be here in two weeks.
Excellent.
He's already here. He's just gonna be on the books full-time.
Great. The other notation, it actually came up last night at the schools, was the offset at Parks and Schools, so that's in here as well, if anyone had any questions on that. But the only other thing I would, I would mention is that a couple of increases with equipment costs, repair of that equipment. And we seem to have a, a run on shrubbery and fence issues, so we, we gave them another couple of grand to resolve those issues. But all in all, it's, it's the budget you've seen before. Not sure if you have any specific questions. But I, again, I would suggest that the Parks Department is in very good hands. We're very happy to have Steve.
Thank you. Thank you, man.
Councilor DeMambo.
Steve, you do, do a great job. You've been with the city forever and ever. Congratulations on your new position. No better person for the job. You know every square inch of every blade of grass throughout the city.
I know.
What are we, 81 acres right now?
Been there for a long time.
81 acres we're at?
What's that?
What do you got, 81 acres you gotta maintain?
Around there, yeah. Yep.
So that follows up with my question. Do you have enough equipment? Do you have what you need? Do you have everything in place?
We do. We just got a brand-new machine last year. We just got a new truck this year. We got a couple of new pieces coming. One's actually, should be here any day, from last year's capital plan. And we got, I just put in for two for the next capital plan. They should be here hopefully by the end of the summer, fall, you know, the end of the year. So-
You getting everything repaired? You getting all your parts? You getting everything you need?
Everything we need, whatever we need.
Irrigation, supplies, everything?
Yep.
Because I see in the budget, you got, you got a line item of $60,000-
Yep.
For equipment repair, which-
As much as stuff is brand-new, it does break down, believe me.
No, understandable, but that's, that doesn't really go very far when it comes to heavy equipment and trucks.
Especially when we're using it every day.
Right. And I see you guys all over, especially up in North Woburn, the deckmowers and everything else. So you, you guys do a great job. Your team does a great job. So congratulations, and if you need anything, let us know. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Dillon.
Thank you. Thanks for everything you and your team does. You had a great teacher. You're already off and running, as Mayor Concanon said, the common was spectacular.
Thank you.
Always looks beautiful. You guys, it amazes me- Always looks beautiful. You guys, it amazes me how you can get everything done you get done, and everything looks so nice.
We, I got a good crew, you know. I've been part of that crew for, on the Snooki, for 35 years. So he handed the ball to me, and I'm running with it. And so I learned from the best. And so I just got to basically just keep doing what we got to do. And we see results, like the other day, and I asked the mayor this morning, when I saw him, everybody, you know, is everybody happy? It was unbelievable. Perfect. Thank you.
Great. Well, keep up the great work, and we thank you. You have our support.
Thank you.
Council DeMers?
Thanks. Congrats, Steve, on the promotion.
Thanks.
Just one question on the summer work. I know a few years ago, Snooki had mentioned to us that it was, he was having a hard time getting kids to apply. So are you expecting to have a full summer staff?
We have, three kids came in yesterday.
Yep.
We got one more coming next week. And I actually have a kid that was looking, but I told him right now, we're full.
Great.
So we started them yesterday. They're good kids. They're teaching them the ropes, how to do things, and they're catching on quick.
Awesome.
So they're.
That's good to hear.
We got them till the end of the summer until they go back to school.
Great. Great. It's always a great opportunity. I remember when I, when I worked for the rec department during the summer, home from college.
That's what I started. That's where I started.
And some great folks. But yeah. Thank you, Mrs. Shannon.
Council Mr. Brown?
A summer help really knows how to use those weed whackers. So I'm very excited.
They do.
I just wanted, I just wanted to say.
We talked to him yesterday.
I just wanted to say, congratulations. And I have to say, this is the first time in 19 years that I have heard the Parks Department head say, "We're all good."
Really?
You didn't ask for, you didn't ask for one piece of equipment? You didn't ask for a truck? You didn't ask for anything?
Well.
So did Christmas come early sometime?
Next year might be a different story.
That's all right. That's all right.
We have a couple of trucks that are getting a little long in the tooth, so.
That's all right.
We'll see you next year.
Congratulations, Steve.
Thank you.
Council Papalato?
Thank you. Congratulations on the new role. Well deserved.
Thank you.
I know you've worked hard for a long time.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. Do you have an open truck driver position there? Is that an add to the budget, or is that something?
No, that's part of, part of, it's just the guy that's going to be coming in is replacing the guy that's moved into my old position.
Okay.
He's worked for us part-time right now. And he will, I just talked today, we're going to get the ball rolling, get him in the door. He's in the door. He's just, like I said, full-time.
It's hard to fill those shoes, though, I'm sure, right?
No, no, you know. My foreman, my new foreman, Eric Scalise, he's, we've been working together for over 25 years, too. So he knows what I need from him. And that's all I need. My guys, they listen. As long as they listen and do what I tell them, they, I'm happy, everybody's happy. So that's why the common looked like it did.
Well, thank you. Congratulations, and good luck.
Steve, thank you for everything you guys did for Memorial Day. It looked fabulous out there, and for everything else you do around the city to make Woburn the gem that it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other comments?
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Appreciate it.
Good evening, Rory.
Good evening. I want to start off by saying how excited I am that Stephen got this job. It's been a seamless transition. As you know, I've worked with Snooki, and he's been here for over 50 years. And I had worked with Stephen in the past, and I was very excited that he got this job. And things have been moving very smoothly. It's like nothing has ever changed. I mean, Jimmy is still around a little bit, but Stephen's been very responsive, and it's, it's great. I think the Parks will continue to stay where they have been, and hopefully get, maybe get a little bit better if we can. So. You have before you my, my budget. It does have two small increases to it, to the pool leaders' account and to the maintenance. That's for the new spray park that's coming online, the beginning of, hopefully, the beginning of July. That will be open this summer. So we're not sure what we're going to need in anticipation of staffing. It's all a new, you know, machine for me to learn. So hopefully, we'll have a better handle on it for next budget, and we might need some more. Maybe we'll need some less. Not really sure yet. I've never operated one of these, so we'll figure that out as we go. I did not, I did put in for another full-time person. I did not receive that. You know, I did go back and forth with the mayor regarding this. I understand that budgets are tight as well. And you know how hard Brian and I work down there. Brian is, you know, constantly working, creating new programs. We've had a part-time person that has been in there for this year. She's unfortunately leaving us tomorrow. Is her last day. She's moving to Western Mass. So we're losing her. It will be fine for the summer. We have a great summer staff coming back, a lot of returning veterans. Maybe we'll call back in, Mr. DeMers. But we'll have to reconvene and figure out what we're going to do in September with some part-time help in the office and running some other programs. She was fantastic for us. I'm hopeful maybe she'll come back at some point, but it'll be a little bit of a tough loss, and we'll try and replace her when we can. But other than that, if I have any questions?
Council Mr. Brown?
First, Rory, I remember when you took over this job. It seems like yesterday. And you've been amazing at it since the day you took it over. So thank you for that. Also, thank you for the new equipment at Leland that arrived sooner than.
Yep.
Expected. But, I mean, I know we've been waiting for a while, but it's here.
Yeah.
So thank you for that. I know everybody is going to be so excited when it gets set up.
It will.
I'm disappointed to hear that you didn't get to keep the position. Your office generates revenue. So maybe, you know, we can, I don't know if we can change that or not. Maybe the mayor might be open to some conversations before we get to the final budget. Who knows? But I would support that 100%. As I say, you guys generate revenue. So.
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you for everything that you do for our city.
Thanks.
President Dillon?
Thank you. Well, you've got a lot on your plate.
Yep.
As well as the parks, all the different activities for the kids. And you do a great job. I know this because now I have grandkids involved in it.
Mm-hmm.
And they love it. They can't wait to get out there and be involved. And all the people that you have working there do such a great job. And I've said it before, and I'll say it again, makes me happy when I drive by the old Spence Farm, farmhouse stand and see the lights on 6:30, 7 o'clock, even later sometimes, with the different activities. What a great use of a property that people at one time didn't want to support us having the city. So just an incredible job. Do so much with so little. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Yeah. Spence Farm is great. We're actually putting in a new floor. We'll be ready before our summer programs start. So that will allow us to maybe do some more fitness programs. The floor in there is really, it's an old tile floor, as it was a farm stand. So it'll really spruce that up, and then we can do some more programs in there during the day. And it's nice. I love the building. I love having it. It's, it's been really, really helpful and really beneficial to us and the community. It's used a lot. It's nice.
You do a great job of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council DeMers?
Rory, you do a great job. You and Brian do a great job. And I would be in support of a third person in your office, because I know how you guys were all over the place and you're all over the city. You've got a lot of projects going on. You've got that one up in North Woburn, that play park. It's, it's on its way. I see all the guys over there, and they're moving equipment and everything else. I mean, they're moving right along over there. And I just want to let you know, I have a lot of constituents that really enjoy that park. They're looking forward to the, to the new park that's being installed as I speak. So I appreciate everything you and Brian are doing. And again, you guys do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Should be open in a couple of weeks, hopefully.
Really? Couple of weeks? Good.
They move along quickly.
Excellent.
Time is money for those contractors. So they want to, they want to get going and get out.
It's the season.
Yes.
Thank you.
Council DeMers?
I'll echo Council DeMers' sentiments. I know I sat in on one of the meetings that you had with some concerned residents about the Farullo playground, especially focusing on the accessibility for all children. And I think that was key. You know, we weren't probably able to make everybody 100% happy, but you went well above and beyond trying to make sure that everybody's voice was heard and committing in the future when we do other playgrounds to, to address that accessibility issue. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
With regards to the recreation coordinator position, has there been any discussion or, you know, looking forward in the sense of, you know, maybe a grant that might assist in that position? Are there any, like, DCR grants or something that we can go through with our grant writer to see if we can fund that position?
I mean, I've never seen any out there for something like that. It's definitely something that we should be, we can fund some of the salary. It's, it's just different. You can't refund the entire salary out of revolving. I believe you have to fund the benefits and everything. There's, there's regulations with revolving, but.
Yeah, maybe even if there's other.
Yeah.
If there's another recurring grant for another portion of your line items, that we could swing that.
Yeah.
Because I think, you know, seeing what you guys do in that small office of yours, and the amount of programmings from, God, the last 20 years that have gone in place, it's truly remarkable to see how much that department's grown. And I think having that added resource to make sure that it's continued to be run like a Swiss watch would be very effective, especially, like my colleague said, mentioned that it's a revenue-producing, you know. There's a lot of, you know, program fees and stuff like that, and umpires, refs, and all that. So I think, I think that's, that's very key for our community, having that outlet. So.
Yes.
I'm hopeful that in a future budget, we'll see that in there.
I'm hopeful, too.
Well, thank you for everything, Rory.
Rory, thank you for everything you do, especially all the inclusive projects that you do for every kid, so that, adult, that they could be available to do it.
Yeah.
One thing I do want to touch on is, we talked about a couple of weeks, a week ago, parking at Ryan Field. If we could look at that possibly in the future.
Yeah. Definitely a use that we need to, we need to address, especially that, that field I feel like is underutilized now. Needs some work done to it, but it's, it's a great field, especially in, you know, the west side of Woburn. That, that should be addressed. But parking is the main issue. You don't want to build a beautiful field and not have parking for it.
Correct. And I'd be more than happy to work with you.
Yeah.
On it, so.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have any comments?
Thanks, Rory.
Thank you, Rory.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on our agenda is the police department. Chief Ruffo.
This is on page 18.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, city council members. How are you?
Good, Chief.
Good.
Evening, Chief.
I would say the most significant change in the budget is obviously due to contractual increases. And I would say, if you would like to ask me any questions regarding any portion of everything, willing to listen.
Anybody have any, Council DeMers?
Evening, Chief.
Good evening.
So let me ask, we always have this conversation. Are you at the levels you need to be with your staff and offices out on the, across the city?
No, but it's not a factor of the city not providing the funding for it. Hiring has been horrible. I've been here several years in a row. The same thing is occurring. Hiring is very difficult. It's.
Even post-COVID?
Say again?
Even post-COVID?
Absolutely. It just, it hasn't changed. Our pool seems to diminish every year. Civil service has a yearly exam now. Instead of every two years, it is going to happen, that it's going to be every six months. There are some changes with civil service and how we can hire actually from a city list in addition to a civil service list. That may help, you know, help hiring. But based upon just the way we hire on civil service, it's very difficult. The people are just not as interested in being police officers as they were in the past.
So you still haven't filled that attrition?
Correct. We're maintaining. For instance, last year, actually July 1st, we called for a list for eight candidates. Out of the eight, we had a number of candidates. We ended up sending four to the academy. Out of the contenders, a vast majority of them couldn't pass a simple physical aptitude test. So we ended up sending three to, three to the academy. One graduated. Two dropped out from the first day up until the 20th week. We were fortunate. There were two candidates from a contiguous town that were Woburn residents and took, had taken the exam. We appointed them. We don't do lateral transfers or pilfer from other communities, but they were Woburn residents that chose to transfer to Woburn. We were very fortunate there. So ultimately, we, we have four new hires. Currently, there are two in the academy. They're scheduled to graduate in October.
Well, you do a heck of a job, especially up in North Woburn. The presence is there. You and I have talked about that. I appreciate all the presence. I appreciate the offices up there. They're visible. They're vigilant. I also appreciate they don't run the sirens all night long by my house. I do see the blue lights, though. It lights the house up like a disco. But it's, it's appreciated. And I just want you to know that. The constituents notice it. They feel safe. I haven't heard any issues or anything, no questions or comments or concerns. So you guys and your team, you do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for everything. And by the way, congratulations, and have a happy retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Dillon?
Thank you.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
I've said many times, our Woburn PD is second to none.
Thank you.
That's from the leader as well, showing an example. You do a great job. I sound like a broken record because I say it all the time. Monday through Friday, working hours, we go to 200,000 people for a population. People just don't understand that. And then you add the highways as well, two major highways, never mind the other main roads. It's a busy place. And I will say, being a senior citizen, I feel just as safe in this great city that I felt growing up in as well. You do a great job. Your department does a great job. And I know it's very much appreciated from the community as well, because everyone here that goes throughout this great city appreciates what you and your department does.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great people.
Council Mr. Brown?
I just wanted to echo all those same thoughts. I try so hard not to bother you, and every time I call you, you say, "You're not bothering me." But some of the things I call you about, I think to myself, "Should I be calling the chief of police about this?" And you always have an answer. And you've always been so supportive. And I'm happy for you for your retirement, but I am sad for us. So thank you.
Thank you.
For everything, all of it. And have fun.
Thank you. I intend to.
Send some pictures from the hunting trips, please.
Council Farullo?
You made me promise not to talk about your retirement, so I won't. So.
Thank you.
Three specific points. Your reputation in the regional thing with your drone is, they, from New Hampshire border to Providence, Rhode Island, what Mangala does with that drone, it's the talk of the profession. Congratulations for that. You did it first-rate. Your progressive forward look with the motorcyclists at the parade the other day, it's been 30 years since we've had motorcyclists that worked around here. And then the addition of the K-9, your forward-looking stuff, even to the final weeks that you're here. It's been a good 40 years with you, Bobby.
Thank you.
Council Campbell?
Yeah. Chief, thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Why do you think hiring is becoming difficult, or has been difficult? Is it the salaries that.
No.
They are receiving? Or is it just because people don't want to become officers anymore?
It's across the board. It's nationwide. Has nothing to do with salaries at all. You don't take this job for a salary. Take it because you want to be a police officer. And it's just changed. The political environment is such that a lot of people don't want to be a police officer.
Yeah. So, so it wouldn't be something where there would be some sort of incentives or anything like that, that could be given? I don't even know what they would be, but.
There's some cities and towns that do some hiring based upon, they'll provide an incentive or a bonus, and it's proven it doesn't work. It's a temporary fix to a long-term solution. It's, it's, the entire political climate has to change. And people have got to start appreciating the job that men and women do every day before you're going to see that support like it was when I saw from the mayor or the chief, former chief, took the job. You wanted it to be a police officer. You never did it for the money.
Yeah. No, absolutely. So thank you again for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Council DeMers?
Thank you. Chief, thanks for everything. I know anything from, you know, when I was on the school committee, working with some school issues and school security, all the way to simple, or what I thought were simple little problems that needed possibly a little nudge from you to get it solved. I really do appreciate that. It is, it is tough, to
nudge from you to get it solved. I really do appreciate that. It is, it is tough, to Councilor Campbell's point. You know, there's been so many changes over the past 10 years even, with, you know, the Post Commission, the repeal of the Quinn Bill for incentivized, you know, payments towards officers who are going to school to further better themselves. But then also, you know, with the Post Commission and more requirements, and then the changes to our reserve structure, having everybody having to basically go to the academy to be able to be a reserve police officer. It's not, it's just not the same. But I know that, you know, we appreciate everything the Police Department does on behalf of our community. I've seen it firsthand in multiple, multiple stories, you know, working hand-in-hand with our fire department too. When there's, when there's been emergencies, it's been great. And, you know, I do appreciate everything that you've done and you leave a lasting legacy to the program, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilor Toro?
Thank you. Chief, thank you very much for everything. Similar to Councilor Marsha Bruin, anytime I had a question, whether it was a phone call or text, always super responsive. I appreciate it. I definitely appreciate the speed enforcement, especially over near the Goodyear. Text, I'll send you a message all the time when the guys are over there, you know, slowing down some of our daily visitors.
Can you back it up a little?
So, I appreciate it. Whoever ends up taking over the position, or is lucky enough to get the position, will have big shoes to fill. Wish you the best in retirement and I'm sure we'll see you around.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you for everything you and the Police Department do. Really appreciate it. Always out there in the community. I know, we see you, any big event that's going on in the city, you're the first person there and usually with the last person to leave. Especially, you know, like last year at Flag Day, you're out there chasing kids across the field on bikes. I mean, that's not your job, but you were there doing it.
It is.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments? Councilor Popolato?
You've done a great job. I've known you for a very long time. Whatever you do, you do it with your heart. And I hope you enjoy your retirement. You're well-earned.
Thank you.
Any other comments? No? Well, thank you Chief.
Thank you.
Have a heck of a retirement.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Public Works, Superintendent Duran. On page 33.
That's a tough act to follow. You're not rid of me yet. I do appreciate my buddy here.
Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll just talk a little real quickly about some of the DPW stuff we've done recently. The main focus has probably been the center area. A little bit different from what we've done in the past. We have done a bunch of stuff, you know, around the center, tried to clean that up as best we could. We've done a bunch of other major drainage things I know that some of you are well aware of. We've done a bunch of other DPW stuff, typically, you know, water sewer that are typically DPW-related. I think one of the biggest things too that we've done is, we've kind of bridged a gap with schools. You know, I know that many of you are aware that there have been kind of a little bit of a, there's no other word, there's a gap, there was a gap there that needed to be closed. And we have closed that with working with Facility Superintendent Burnham. And I think that, we hope to continue to do that. So, one of the, we had, having the same issue that Bobby just spoke of, you know, as far as, as far as hiring, again, I've told you before, I'm not just going to hire to hire, I'm going to hire for people that want to be here. And are going to do a good job. Because with union, you're stuck with them for a long time. So that's, that's what I've always done. I know last year, we had the conversation about the facilities manager on the DPW end. It's very important to us and to the mayor's office. And we have made a hire. He actually started on Tuesday. So we'll be getting after that as soon as we can. And that, you know, again, I can answer any DPW questions you may have. I know we're here for the budget. We have asked, in the past, we have just rolled out a level, you know, requested a level budget. This is the first year, you know, through our WUSTAT program that we meet monthly on. You can see, our, all of our accounts are in the red. So we have made significant requests. I'd say they're in the range generally of 10%. And that includes Water and Sewer Enterprises as well. So we're doing the best we have, best we can. We think we get the most out of a taxpayer's buck. And with that being said, I'll just take any questions.
Councilor Toro?
Jay, thank you. I think I speak for both Councilor Demers and I, as it is, as it is in his ward, for helping us with the issue over on Blake Street this year. I would like to say, I know we're in a maintenance year with the budget. Next year, I'd love to see us dedicate some resources to your department. Looking at your budget, there's a lot of positions in here that are zeroed out, that I think were at one point filled, right? You know, I would say that you'd probably agree that you're understaffed and you could use more help and more resources to maintain our city that's consistently growing. So understanding that everyone has to do their part this year to try to level off the budget as much as possible, we appreciate you guys pretty much doing more with less, and really never complaining about it. The guys work their butts off. You, Rennie, I think Rennie's been on for less than a year now at this point, right? I think he's still under a year.
Just about a year, yeah.
You know, that was a fantastic hire. So grateful for Lennie, for Rennie. But I appreciate everything. And hopefully next year, we're talking about your budget and giving you some more resources and some more manpower to properly take care of our city, take care of our city a little bit more. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think a couple of things. We have a renewed contract. DPW got a renewed contract. I think that really will help, you know, attract some attractive candidates. And people that want to work here and work. We, my, and I do want to recognize, my crew is here, not only Rennie, Tony Blaszhowski, Ian Highway Foreman, Chris Doherty, and we demand a lot from them. And, you know, we, you know, it isn't perfect, but it's, we're getting there. So.
You do a great job. Thank you, all of them. Thank you.
President Dillon?
Thank you. I got to tell you, you may be understaffed, but you're over-talented. The amount of work and the different scopes of work, from concrete work, to paving, to dealing with the infrastructure, it's incredible. Certainly, you excel with what you have. I'll use the example of what Mayor Concanon took on as a project, the downtown parking down off of Mann's Court. All in-house, incredible. We couldn't afford to do that and hire people. Chris Doherty out there, working the machinery. And just, I drive through there and it changes not weekly, daily. And I can see what a benefit that's going to be. Because we've all heard the rap, and you're looking at one of the guilty ones up until recently, there's no parking in Woburn. Well, that's going to change. And I know it's not finished, and I know we're taking it in steps. But that is going to be a major, major deal for Woburn Center, as far as people being able to park, take a little walk to go downtown and enjoy downtown. I think that's going to spin around downtown and make it that much better, I really do. And again, all in-house, very impressed with that. So keep up the good work. And as I say, as everyone says here, when there's an emergency, we get you right away, Rennie right away, Chris Doherty right away, you guys are there. You make us look good. We can use the help sometimes. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's a tribute to my guys, and the guys that aren't here as well.
Absolutely.
And actually, and the idea in the center, is the guy behind me, standing on my right shoulder, it was the mayor's idea to pursue this.
I know.
Step by step. So you got to give credit where credit is due, and that's where the credit started.
It's going to be a big step in the right direction, already is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Marsha Bruin?
Jay, I just wanted to say thank you to Chris, Tony, everybody in your department. I try very hard, again, not to bother you. You know when I call you, it's because I have to call you. And usually by the time somebody calls me and I have to call you, that's why I have to call you. So I am so very grateful to you and your team for the work that happened over on Montvale Road with that tree. That was a lot, there was diplomacy that happened there. There was, there was a lot of things that happened there. But I thank you for helping to make it happen. And the night that the flood happened during the fire, your whole team was down there, in the middle of the night, in seconds. If I sat here and talked about everything you do, we'd be here all night. But again, I just wanted to say thank you for everything. And I, I hate to bring this up, but I need a little advice. We have a situation with the flooding along 128 again. And I've been in touch with Mass Highway, Paul Stedman and his team, Ralph over there. I might be reaching out to you tomorrow to see if you might be able to help move things along. It's become a bigger issue than it was in the past for some of those homes over there. Costing a lot of money and damage. So again, I don't know if you can help me. I'm throwing it out there to let you know I'm going to be giving you a call tomorrow.
We could certainly try to help.
I know.
You understand, I run the Woburn DPW.
I do understand.
Paul Stedman runs the Mass DOT.
I do understand.
He's the boss.
But you've also helped before. So I'll call. Thank you.
We'll certainly try.
All right. Thank you.
Councilor Demers?
Jay, your team does a hell of a job. You guys are all over the city. You know, with a $5 million budget for what you guys do, I mean, it's one of you guys didn't build the pyramids. You know, I mean, it's, you guys are doing infrastructure work, like they said, the sidewalks, the, you know, the roads and, you know, water breaks and everything. And you got, what, approximately, what, 26, 30 guys out in the field? So, I mean, people have to understand the amount of work, the volume, that, you know, as city councilors and the mayor's office and everything else, and things that need to be done, and projects that are being required for you to do. And it's, it's, it's amazing what you guys accomplish in the short amount of time and on a very tight budget. I just want everybody at home to know what, what you guys do and how, how we guys go about it. And I appreciate it. And we all thank you. You know, Woburn as a whole, I believe, you know, owes you a, you know, a debt of gratitude and thanks for everything you do and keeping this city running. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Demers?
Thank you. Thank you Jay, for everything. Unlike Councilor Marsha Bruin, I enjoy calling you and giving you a hot time every once in a while. No, but I do want to echo what Councilor Toro said, that, the ingenuity you folks used in coming up with a fix over on Blake Street to take care of that drainage issue that was flooding out the end of that street is greatly appreciated amongst those constituents down there. Rob and I, I've actually gotten multiple updates on some of the recent deluges we had out there, that it was all fine.
Good updates.
So, just wanted to let you know, those are the type of updates. As a city councillor, we love her, and so I just wanted to publicly say that, to thank you and your team for that work that you folks did down there. I also want to point out to my colleagues, I know Councilor Toro alluded to it. And I, I do appreciate that in our budget, we have the, you know, historical record of a lot of these positions that are in here that are zeroed out, that have not been filled in years, and have not been budgeted for in years. And I think over the years, you know, it was, the DPW was a political football for some of those years, where it was easy to take a shot at the DPW and say, "Ah, why are we doing it with that many guys? Oh, why do we need that many people?" When I sit in a meeting with you, in the department head meeting and so forth, and I see everything that you're already doing, and you're sending out teams to do a lot of work that's general maintenance, just to take care of what we got. And then you've got nine of us calling and asking your team, "Hey, can you do this? Can you do that?" And that's above and beyond the general maintenance that your team is upkeeping around town. So I just wanted to say, from where I am as a councillor, but also a resident, I wanted to thank you and your team for doing a lot with a little. Because I know, sitting there and asking, "Hey, well, what, can you do this for me?" And then I know you've already had your plan out, where you had your guys going every day. And that was an added, an added thing onto your list of things to do. So I just appreciate the attentiveness you have to constituents' concerns and getting your team to do some great work where we needed it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilor Popolato?
Thank you. I really appreciate you taking my many, many, many obscure texts and emails that I send you for various things, up to, including last night. You're always very quick on responses and it lets me get, get back to the, the people that are making the initial calls to me. So thank you for doing all that. Also, the Green and Nashua Street work that you've done so far, outstanding. I get tons of compliments back from everything that's happening there. So I know there's a few more steps to go, but so far, we're getting great feedback there. So thank you. And that's, that's you and the Engineering Department. Alex has done a great job jumping in there as well. So thank you. As far as the budget goes, if I'm reading this right, I see that there's four open positions here?
There's actually maybe five or six altogether.
Five or six.
We still have...
These are replacements for people that have left or unfilled positions. You're not adding anything.
Yeah, I mean, I've got a couple of high-end positions that I want to fill, but I can't get the right guy. I can't, the right woman, you know, I just, I can't, and I'm not going to take, just adamant about, like, when I need, I know good people.
Yep.
And the three guys that are behind me now, I need guys that are maybe just below, a step below them, that can jump into their spot when the time comes that I go or they have to go.
Yep. You don't need a warm body, you need the right people in there. I get it.
Yeah, yeah.
But these are, none of these are net new. These are things that have been there that you're trying to fill.
A little bit. You know, there's, you know, we had a couple of recent retirees.
Right.
So we just hired the facilities manager, and I want him to pick his own team. I think it's only fair. But he's going, they're going to be working with him. I want him involved in the process of hiring them. So.
Okay. Well, thank you for all you do.
Councilor Campbell?
Yeah, hi Jake. Thank you so much for everything that you do, your guys do, your team. Ever Source, finally, that whole area is, is done.
It's done. Like that MWR, Ian Mass DOT, they are done.
Yes. What a relief. The area right at the corner of Lake and Arlington Road came out absolutely beautiful. Really, the design, that one concern that I had called you about with the fencing, to continue it, you were right on it immediately. And with Ever Source, and they, you guys figured it out, and you put more fencing so that it was safer for any bicyclists and all of that. I've gotten a lot of compliments for that area. And I'm thrilled with it. And it works so much better than it did before. My only request is, please don't put any shrubbery in that little island. Is Natasha Studios, has their little sign there, or somebody? Let's not put anything in there so we can easily see when we're taking that corner onto Arlington Road.
We told them to put in a concrete base and just put mulch in there.
Yeah, good. I don't...
Nothing's going to grow, nothing's going to grow through the concrete.
Good, 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 good. Because we don't need anything to block, block that. But yeah, thank you. The, honestly, the amount of work that is done in-house, I don't know if the residents of Woburns understand what you and your team does. I mean, it's absolutely incredible, the amount of talent across the board is amazing, really amazing. Design work, amazing. So thank you. I also want to thank you for getting back to me immediately. Even when you're in a meeting, you'll text me, "I'm in a meeting, can I call you back?" Yes. You know, I mean, that's really wonderful. So I know that you're right on top of things, and I do really appreciate that. Once again, thank you. Community Gardens, they were supposed to be opening up. The next day, a massive tree fell right across the road, right at Horn Pond. Your guys were on it, cut the tree, gone. Really quite amazing. So, once again, thank you for everything that you're doing. And I do appreciate and commend you for not just hiring anybody for these positions, forgetting the right person, because you are right. Once they are in the system and working, if they're not going to work out, it's very hard to get someone out. So to get somebody that's truly talented for the position, I do appreciate that. There was one other thing I wanted to, oh, the, I just lost my train of thought. I'm not going to say it's age, but it is possible. So I guess that's it for now. If it comes back to me, I might ask. But thank you again. Take care.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments?
I'm glad I'm not.
Jay, thank you for you and your team for everything you do throughout the city, from plowing to helping cut grass, to everything. I especially want to thank you and Rennie for working hard with the Battle Road Memorial. All that pretty much was done in-house. And you guys did an amazing job up there, and I really appreciate it. The residents love it up there. Grass looks great, the hydro seeding took, and appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We've got a lot of compliments too, on that note.
Oh, I remember what I wanted to say.
Councilor Campbell?
Oh, God. Okay, I guess it's not meant to be said.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay.
Next on the agenda is the Engineering Department. Engineer Rosink.
Gordon is fine.
We have copies, don't worry about it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hey, Alex. I had a couple of slides I put together, but that was really just to show off Matt Barrett's work on the GIS with the drone. I think you have a copy of him anyway, and you're all familiar with what he does. So, yeah, Alex Truzicki, your new city engineer now, three months... now, three months, small department.
Page thirty-two.
Hoping to, uh, grow. Right now, we have an opening for assistant city engineer that you'll see in your budget is still funded. I would hope that, um, we keep pursuing that avenue. The amount of work that the Engineering Department had done with the staff they had in place is, is pretty remarkable. Uh, so, credit to the two guys who are, I call them my two favorite interns. Uh, I go back and forth on who's one and two, but, uh, Jay and Greg, just for their service to the Woburn City Engineering Department, really holding it together for so long. Uh, we, what we ended up doing, 'cause we couldn't hire an assistant city engineer at the time, was come up with a more entry-level job for, and I called that Civil Engineer One and Civil Engineer Two, basically zero to five years and five to 10 years experience, just to get someone, uh, in the door. And we have had an applicant, uh, accept the job, who's looking to start in July, once we kinda go through the final motions, which Sean was great in helping us out there. Uh, on the budget stuff, everything's really the same. There's slight increases on dues and meetings, AutoCAD software. So, Mystic River Watershed Association, who does a great job with the community outreach. Everything else is the same. The only thing you'll see or notice that consulting did go up. I requested a little bit of buffer there, just, uh, with the staff levels we have now and some of the experience that we're losing, it's good to have that safety net, if I need to call on an outside party, to have someone take a good look at anything that comes up, you know, and the various commissions and duties that the Engineering Department is, uh, doing. I can't be everywhere as much as I wish I was. Um, and then for current projects, I really just was gonna highlight quickly some of the stuff we're doing in-house. Uh, we put the water main job out to bid. It's almost a million dollars in design work, totally done in-house, between us and the DPW. The paving program runs about $2 million that we're doing in-house. Uh, we're hoping to come back this year on a Hurl Park $3 million MVP grant that we're doing with the planning department and the grant administrators. Uh, Horn Pond Complete Streets is $215,000 starting soon on the pedestrian improvements to the sidewalk and pond. Uh, and this is all really in the time I started those, those five projects, and that doesn't get to, financially, we pushed through our office about $30 million in open purchase orders today, and I think next year, I'm estimating that we have project management level on somewhere between $75 and $100 million worth of projects. Um, there's four big ones, obviously, Horn Pond Water Treatment Plant, New Boston Street Bridge, uh, North Woburn Trunk Sewer, and the downtown traffic improvements are each about $20 to $25 million. That, we have consultants helping out, but having an extra set of eyes and a review in-house, really, anything that the Engineering Department doesn't do costs you 30% more for someone else to do it outside this door. So, whatever we can do in-house, we're saving the city a lot of money. So, that's all I got, and we'll open up for questions.
President Dillon.
Thank you. Alex, you're mature among, beyond your years already, and I know you've been doing this for a little bit already, but just working with you in the short time I've had the privilege to work with you at the Plumpton Open Space and the Hurl Park, you're gonna do wonderful in this city. We're very fortunate to have you. You take the project to heart, and you really can tell you enjoy your work. So, very much appreciated all the help you've given me already, and, uh, just look forward to continuing to work with you and appreciate, again, just what you do in-house to save the city money.
Yeah, thank you. Anytime.
You know, times are tough right now, and we're trying to do the best we can with the budget we have. So, everything that you do in-house, like all the other departments, it's a great source of, a way to save and keep our budget reasonable. So, thank you and look forward to working with you.
Yep.
Councilor DeMers.
Thank you. Thank you. It's been a pleasure to have you. I remember when we interviewed you, and we were talking about all the different projects you did in Redding. Um, you might recall the situation with the light on West Street came up.
July 1st is coming soon.
Um, so, just, um, might ask for your help if you could dig back to your Redding roots, but it will be easy. Representative Hagerty secured $50,000 for, for your friends and our friends in Redding to fix the rest of the light at West Street that needed fixing. So, I was hoping maybe you might be to put a call in to see if we could move it along a little bit.
I spoke to that town engineer today. We're still very close, so I will follow up with him. It probably was a contractual July 1st fiscal year thing for them, so...
The money's in the bank, I was told.
It's coming soon. Yeah, we'll get it done.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Councilor DeMembro.
Alex, uh, short time you've been here, we got, kinda got thrown in baptism under fire, and, uh, I kinda warned you when we were interviewing, and I said, "Watch out, it's coming." Um, and you're doing a heck of a job.
Thank you.
You're answering everybody's calls. You and I have communicated several times on several projects up in North Woburn. Uh, there's gonna be several more coming down the pike, as you alluded to, uh, just a little while ago. Um, y- your office, uh, does a great job. I would like to see more staff in there, uh, 'cause the city is growing, and there's a lot of projects, and we do rely on your office. Um, so, I'm looking forward to, you know, who your, who your next candidates are gonna be, and, you know, hopefully you can get them in there sooner than later. Um, so, other than that, um, I support the budget, I support the hirings, and, uh, I look forward to all the projects coming down in the future and working with you. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, just to follow up to that, I'm hoping to kinda regroup for the fall. We'll give people the summer. It's not really a good time to hire with vacations and stuff like that.
Sure, sure.
We are, as Tom alluded to, moving next door. That might be a little more attractive, and the budget's currently being used to supplement, uh, the two oldest interns in the state. Um, so, we're putting, we're putting good use to it, uh, even in the meantime, and keeping them on board till we get someone, uh, you know, as an assistant, has been vitally helpful to me, too.
Just be gentle with them and, you know, let them have their nap time, so we can still field questions, but I thank you for everything.
Thank you. Thank you. Yep.
Councilor DeMers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Alex, for your presentation here. Um, I do, I do commend you for saying something that I was kind of thinking ahead of time, in that, you know, this is the one department where the more money we spend on consulting, the less we save in terms of our ability to do in-house stuff. But I also think that it also, having a full staff in there and capable hands, also allows you to anticipate some of the city's needs as well and think forward. And one of the things that I've talked with Mayor Concanon about is, uh, a much broader approach to our stormwater management, especially in, you know, we have brooks and streams across the community that, for years, really haven't had anybody tending to it. We've had situations, you know, I know in some of my wards where, you know, the number one complaint isn't necessarily the drainage or the standing water at the back of their property, it's the amount of money that their electric bill comes up to when the sub pumps have been constantly running. Um, so, I'm looking forward to working with you on that, um, hopefully with a little bit of the help of those interns you have down there. And, um, no, it's, it's impressive, the presentation and the amount of money in, in terms of planning that's coming through this community. Um, and I hope, I hope you'll keep pushing forward to see a lot of those other projects we're hoping to push, come to full realization.
Yeah, just on that note, we've hi, uh, signed two different $100,000 consulting contracts. One of them is specifically related to culvert capacity and flooding in the city of Woburn, which I don't think we've really assessed on a network scale in the past. And, like you said, I think the, the gap right now in, in the assistant is, I'm more long-term vision, month-to-month, week-to-week, and we need someone here day-to-day who can go out to the project site and report back and keep things moving. It's hard to be doing both on the time we have, so...
Yeah, no, that's great. Looking forward to see how that, how that shapes up.
Yep.
Thanks, Alex.
Any other councilors have any comments? Alex, I wanna thank you for coming in tonight. I do look forward to working with you for the, one of the tip programs, so the Bedford-Cambridge Road intersection, when that finally gets up and running, as well as the Shaker Glen Restoration Project as well. So, I look forward to that in the future.
Two good ones. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you, Alex.
Next on the agenda is informational technology.
Data processing.
Page...
Page nine.
Nine.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I just wanna start by saying thanks to, uh, R I T guys, Craig and Tyler here at City Hall, Derek and Faison at the library, and Christine at the police. Uh, honestly, I wouldn't be able to get by without all their help. And, uh, for that matter, all of you, uh, participating in, you know, cybersecurity and helping us, you know, stay safe. Um, everyone's contribution helps it, you know, all work, so, thank you. Um, a little bit, I guess, unprepared to previous years, just had a lot going on lately. But, um, I went into this budget, you know, and talked to the mayor, you know, initially, and with some asks of critical needs this year. And, um, you know, he essentially said back to me, "It's gonna be tight, you know, be creative." Uh, so, I came back a week later and was able to find some ways to actually cut my budget this year by utilizing some, uh, capital projects. And I think that, you know, that's gonna allow us to save a lot more money over time. We don't wanna be changing systems, um, that we're gonna be putting in place. You know, we want them to last, you know, for several years, and, um, it'll save us more money. Um, so, ultimately, uh, this year's really theme is housekeeping. Uh, we eliminated some accounts, um, that were named for specific systems, uh, created a new business applications account that's citywide business applications, and, um, you know, and was able to save some money in the end. So, um, you know, that's all I'd really say to that. So, open to any questions.
Councilor DeMembro.
David, your department does a great job, and let's face it, you know, computer technology is, is the wave of the future. My question is, uh, knowing that, it's actually two parts. Um, cybersecurity, as I always ask you, is, is always in demand, and we're always, there's always, you know, spam and bots and everything else out there, always trying to infiltrate and trying to hack the systems. Um, is, is there software systems in place, and, and are you gonna be upgrading them anytime soon? And also, um, what is your view on this AI? We're hearing a lot about AI. Is, is that something that's coming to Woburn, or are we gonna wait for the spaceships to come in and handle it then?
Yeah, so, you know, there's, right now, there's a lot of hype around AI, but, you know, we've been using AI here for quite some time. One of our first antivirus products, um, was an AI-based detection system. Um, it was just, you know, you usually hear about these, like Norton antivirus and McAfee and things like that. This one was a new approach in that it looked at types of files and made a judgment of, "That one seems unsafe," versus just knowing, you know, mugshots of, like, looking for a specific person. You'd look for more what they're doing. Um, so, we've been using AI in a number of different systems. I had a cybersecurity account that you actually asked about last year, that was, you know, just a little bit of money in there to, to supplement, you know, one of the many things that were spread across my budget in different accounts. Uh, this year, a lot of that. So, we got a grant last year for a little over $100,000 that we're now continuing the funding for into a capital project this year, um, in addition to more grants from the state for, you know, uh, antivirus and things like that. Um, so, we're always chugging away at that and, you know, changing these systems as, you know, as some start to not be as great as others, you know, we're constantly shuffling those. I mean, try not to, but, I mean, um, times change, and you have to stay up with it, especially in cybersecurity. So, I think that we're doing quite well. I mean, we've been very well supported here, so, um, you know, I, I think we're doing well.
Excellent. Well, I appreciate all your work and everything out of each of them. Thank you.
President Dillon.
Thank you. Um, David, great work. Um, before I retired, I was working in Lowell, and I had a lot of business in City Hall, pulling permits, inspections and such, with Fire Department and all that. Lot in City Hall. Well, a couple of years ago, they had their City Hall, all the computers hacked. Let me tell you, what a nightmare. And it wasn't over in a month. It wasn't over in six months. It was a big deal. So, I know how important it is, and I, I appreciate that you keep us safe. Um, I had some trouble with, um, my email, my city email. I went down, saw Tyler, and he had it fixed like in two seconds. I wanted to bring him home and say, "Fix this, fix that."
We get that a lot. They're great. They really are. I wouldn't be able to get by without them.
Absolutely. Uh, just you and Craig and him do a great job, and I thank you. I know how important it is that you keep all our identities safe and make sure we don't get hacked, uh, you know. I, I had my identity stolen a couple of years ago. I don't know why they stole mine. I've been married 43 years. I have no money. My wife has it. But they got mine, and it was a nightmare. It really was.
It's tough. It's nonstop. You know, it's, you just gotta stay on your toes.
Thank you for what you do. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Councilor Papalatto.
Thank you. Um, you know, I've come down to you for various things over time, and you're always prompt, and your staff is there. So, thank you for everything that you do there. Um, I will say that you have a very small staff, and you have a very small budget relative to what you support there. So, with all these systems and applications, and if email goes down, your, your phone's gonna be ringing off the hook, right? Every, every desk has that on it. So, um, thank you for everything that you do. You, you do a lot with a little.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? David, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave.
Last but not least for tonight, we have the Fire Department. Chief Kenton and Deputy Chief Poole.
Good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
Chief Kenton.
Evening, chief.
Uh, Fire Department is looking for some consideration for a 15.85% increase this year, largely due to salary incre, contractual salary increases, the addition of seven new firefighters, to man our long-awaited second aerial coming in December. And we have some minor operational budget increases as well. Um, I, I did have the opportunity to speak to a number, number of council members about the seven new positions, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions anybody has, and, uh, go from there.
President Dillon.
Um, you've explained it to me, um, and the mayor has also explained where the money's coming from, so it really isn't something that's going to have an impact on our taxes. We're able to do it, uh, a lot from our ambulance receipts, correct?
Correct.
So, again, it sounds like a broken record. Our population swells to 200,000 people.
We're on pace to hit over 20,000 responses this year.
That's incredible.
We're getting busier.
And I was one of them, and I gotta tell you, all kidding aside, I was, couldn't get off the ground. Yeah, guys and women came out, treated me professionally, took care of me, and I saw firsthand the good works that your department does. So, I appreciate that. And I know I'm not the only one in Woburn that gets that great treatment. They didn't know who I was, so that was the good thing. Um, but, again, public safety, we've been very lucky. We have a growing city, and we need to support our public safety. As we get larger and more businesses come in, we need to make sure that you and your staff and the whole, as well as the Police Department, have the ability to cover the whole city. And we're very lucky that, uh, we have you at the top of the, leading the charge and making sure everyone's safe. So, thank you very much. It means a lot to us in the community that we're in good, good hands.
Sure.
Councilor Papalatto.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for putting this together, it's, um, and taking the time to walk me through all this, and I'm a remedial learner when it comes to this, so you, you have great patience. I also wanna thank you for spending the time with the neighbors up on Henshaw Street, you and the mayor came up, they, you immediately eased their mind when you went through the process and how the guys work, and when the alarms go off and all of that. So, thank you for doing all that. Um, a lot of the questions I had for you in our discussion around those seven firefighter ads, because typically in a maintenance year, you wouldn't expect to see seven ads. But when you walk through it and you explain there's extra pieces involved and you need to support them, I, I understand where you're coming from. But, and maybe this is a question for Charlie or, or not, but, um, what I've heard is at least half of those will be subsidized with, with ambulance receipts.
Correct.
So, if that's the case, why don't we see credit lines here in the budget?
You, you will see...
Maybe that is a Charlie question. I don't know.
Come on up, Charlie. Yeah, you, you will see in, in an offset section.
Yeah.
Yes.
Hold on a minute. I, as you can see on the bottom of the second page...
What page is that?
Uh, twenty-five. Twenty-five, yes.
Twenty-five?
Yep. So, after it gives the total for the department, there actually is an offset there. We don't do it directly by the individuals, because multiple people work on ambulances, different positions, so it's done as a complete off, offset to the bottom line. So, we had been carrying for years the $950,000... for years the 950,000 that we had as the offset. But because of the growth of the department over the last 10 years and the activities, and our revenues from the BLS services that we get have increased dramatically over the last several years. Once, because they, by ordinance, we adjusted it, so we were getting a fair rate on what we were getting. So our revenue now is at the level that we feel it's appropriate. And this year, you'll see it, we went from 950 to $1,200,000 as the offset. And we're using those BLS-
Part of that offset is to pay for those firefighters.
Yes, that increase. So we're at 950 last year, we're a million 250 this year.
Okay.
So that $300,000 is offsetting the seven positions in this year's budget going forward.
And will that be year over year? Or will that at some point go away?
At this point, I believe, our suggestion is to keep it at the 1.25. And we'll address that year over year as we see the revenues. If they continue to increase based on the volume, we might be able to adjust it again. But we feel this was an appropriate level of adjustment at this time to bring it up to the current levels of revenue that we're bringing in.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We went through all the maintenance items, chief, that we went through. And I don't want to bore the crowd with that again. But you answered the questions, you know, sufficiently that I understand what's there. And again, thank you for what you do.
Counselor Toro.
Thank you. Chief, we went, we spoke at length about the increase in your budget as well. And to be honest, it's a no-brainer, right? I think the budget's up about a million bucks, give or take, roughly, year over year. The majority of that money comes to hire the seven firefighters that need to come in to man that piece of equipment that the prior council authorized the purchase of. Now it's coming, it's just the second leg of that first authorization, you know? Unless we want to stick it in Woburn Center as a nice Christmas ornament, you know?
Correct.
So it's a no-brainer. It doesn't matter if it's a maintenance year, or if it's a spending year, or whatever you want to call it, right? It's a necessity. So no gripes, no resistance from me. Always willing to support you guys. Can't wait to see this piece of equipment. And for the general public, I think it was 2012 or 2014, we had a second aerial-
Correct.
-that was taken out of commission to allow three staff on each piece.
It's all about safety. We wanted, we were one of the last communities in Metro Fire to run with two people on a piece of apparatus, which was dangerous.
Yep.
So we took the aerial out of service, we redistributed the bend to make up three-man companies, which is still below the OSHA requirements. And we put the captain in a car for better supervision.
And if we needed it back then, we certainly need it now. The population back then, 20,000, maybe. We're at 40,000, 41,000 that live in this city, and several hundred thousand that are in our city during the day. It's, again, it's a no-brainer. You'll never, you'll never get resistance from me to give you what you need to make sure our city's protected. So, thank you.
Counselor DeMembro.
Chief, we sat in a lot of those budget meetings in Mayor Concanon's office. I appreciate all your time. We vetted this, your budget thoroughly. I support the hiring of the seven to take and man, you know, the new tower that's coming in. You know, T1, I see it all over the city. It does an amazing job. The crew that runs that truck, all your team. I mean, your team is outstanding, second to none. I listen to it on the scanner, I hear the calls. It's, I see the trucks going by my house constantly. You guys do an amazing, amazing job. And I appreciate every, each and every one of the individuals that are here, as well as your team that may not be here. They do an amazing job, and all of the residents appreciate it in the city of Woburn. So I thank you. My question, chief, is going through your budget, I know we had discussed briefly that you were contemplating hiring a full-time mechanic in your garage at headquarters. Is that something that's part of your budget, or is that for future?
No, we're continuing with the two best mechanics any fire department could ever ask for.
Okay.
And I have no issues with these two guys. They have another 15 years of mechanic work for our fire department. And we don't get treated, we get treated the best.
Right.
They keep us up and running. There'd be no issue with me. And I want to keep it right the way it is.
Okay.
We don't want for anything with these two guys.
No, no, I was just wondering if you were going to go with that full-time again, that stays there and wrenches all day and all night and, you know?
I was not.
Okay, all right. Well, listen, I appreciate everything, and I support the budget and anything else you guys might need in the future. Please, Joe, you know, I'm on your side now, and I'll help you in any way I can. Thank you, chief.
Counselor DeMers.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. Chief, apologies that I wasn't able to make my work schedule fit in to meet with you and the mayor on the budget. But I don't think it would have taken much to convince me with regards to a second aerial. I think, you know, when we do our work up here, and we have a lot of petitions that come before us, and those are putting cranes up in the sky, I think the very least we can do is add another ladder to our fire fleet. So I think that's a great idea. Brings us back, like Counselor Toro said, 10 years, what, 13 now? I think, if I'm asked correctly, even more. But I've never, you know, how can I put this? I've never seen this many firefighters here that it wasn't like a union issue or anything like that.
Can I point?
No, but I just want to, I just want to thank you all for sitting through-
Can I point something out to you?
...our spiel's this evening, because I know, you know, we, a lot of us get up here and talk, but I do appreciate you all being here this evening. It is a dry subject a lot of the time, but it shows their dedication-
It's pride-
-moving the department forward.
It's pride and professionalism that these guys have. They're all here to show gratitude and appreciation for you people, for everything you've done for us.
Well, no, I'm proud to see them all here this evening, even though they had to put up with us dragging on for a little bit. So thank you all for being here. And chief, thank you for everything you and your team do to keep our city safe.
Counselor Farullo.
I'll be real quick. I just want to thank you for not just what you do, but how you do with the professionalism and the commitment that your generation has. I was going to work the other day, and I was at the red light in front of Engine 2. And the truck was backing in. The guys hop out, they stand out in the street, they stop the truck. It was just, it was impressive to see the way they do their job. And you know, I'm a weirdo with the firemen, I hope good we work together. I think you have a tremendous team. When we took the tour of the station that time, your mechanics don't just fix stuff, they built that brush truck. I was watching them build that thing. It's tremendous what they do in that back garage. I'm just proud, proud to be a part of your past. And you never caught a break. The first night you were in, Captain downtown burned down. I remember the times that we spent together. And I just want to thank you for all you've done and the leadership you've provided for these guys, and how proud I am to be a resident of the city and a member of the city council, and to have served with you for the years I did.
Thank you.
Counselor Mercer Bruin.
Thank you. Chief, there are no words. First of all, I've known for a long time all of the hard work that you and your team does. And of late, the last couple of years, things have been very busy in Ward 5. And thank you to you and the men and women of the Woburn Fire Department. Everyone is safe. So thank you for that. It won't be long before we need to start talking about another fire station over on Commerce Way. I think we need to start those conversations sooner rather than later. That is going to be a city within a city when the MBTA project starts. And that will start sooner than anybody thinks. So I hope we truly can start those conversations, because we can't ask you to do that, too. I'm excited about the big truck. And I know, I know Counselor Toro made a joke about we don't want it to be an ornament in City Hall, down in, you know, for Christmas. But I love the idea of doing a touch-a-truck event or something like that. Could we do that?
Let me know the date.
Or is that like against the rules? I think that would be amazing for-
We'll participate.
Well, in between runs or something, when it arrives, I think we should have a celebration for this people in the city to see it. But thank you for everything you do.
Counselor Campbell.
Hi, chief. Thank you so much to you and your team. I'm thrilled that you have seven new firefighters. That is so important. I remember for several years when I first got on the council, and just really until we just recently got a new mayor, where that wasn't even possible, or even you could even think about doing that. And you were understaffed for the size that we are. So I am thrilled that we're finally at that point. And I do thank Mayor Concanon for that as well, for supporting that. Because we're growing quickly, and we're going to keep growing, as Counselor Mercer Bruin said, in Ward 5, Ward 6, that whole area, and the Woburn Village area, that will at one point be its own little city. Whether we like it or not, that seems to be the way it's going. So we need to keep really thinking to the future and thinking, what else do we need, so that we're not behind the eight ball? Because I do believe that the council is willing to, to spend the monies that's needed to keep the fire department up and running as it should. Because I do feel, like I said at the beginning, when I first came in on the council, I actually was shocked from year to year how no money could be spent, and yet we needed many things. And part of the things that we needed, which at that point, I don't want to go back there, well, I guess I will, is the whole decontamination systems.
Right.
The fact that the, your team was, they were going to these fires, they were not able to clean the toxins off as they should. And without, I mean, obviously now, thankfully, we have fantastic fire departments, fire stations, excuse me, that now will clean all of these toxins off the gear and reducing the risks of cancer. And that's what we have to think of. And I just want the residents of Woburn to understand that these seven positions, and I'm happy that part of it's being funded through the bills that are coming forward. But they need to understand that it's been underfunded for so long, and that the men were under risk of getting cancer, because we were not meeting the needs of the fire department. At least, that's my view. So I'm very happy with everything moving forward. I'm thrilled that we finally have seven new firefighters coming. And I just thank you for all that you do and all that's going to be done and that's coming forward in the future. Thank you.
President Dillon.
Just one last thing, Mayor Concanon, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but if you, with chief, can inform the public, at one of our roundtable discussions we had, the chief was explaining to us that many of his runs are out to these elderly care centers, nursing homes, whatever the proper name is. And it would be that a resident there, and a professional residence that is supposed to be taking care of these folks, has fallen, and instead of they picking them up and getting them into bed, they don't want the liability, and they call the fire department to pick them up. And yet they have RNs, nurses, right there that are more than capable of doing. So, to me, that's an abuse. So I thought it was really interesting that you and the chief found that situation. And I know it's not solved yet, but you're working and trying to see how, A, again, my humble opinion, we're not taking advantage of, two, turn it into a revenue stream that will help offset the taxpayer for some of these new firefighters and new equipment that we're looking at.
Yeah. So you're talking about the notion of the lift assist.
Yes.
Anyone who listens to Woburn Fire's radio, as I do every day, you hear a lot of these lift assists. Obviously, Woburn Fire responds to any need. That's what, that's what they do. And they respond to those. But you're talking about a situation where perhaps in an assisted living facility, one of the residents happens to fall out of the bed. The staff, instead of doing what you might think they'd do, assist them, put them back in the bed, they call Woburn Fire, Woburn Fire comes and helps them. Now, if that's a transport, the person's injured and they need to be transported to the hospital, different protocols kick in, and obviously, there's a billing that goes with that. But the lift assist itself, that just simply, you know, puts Nana back in bed, there is no cost, there's no billing, there's no revenue. And that's, that is an issue. Most importantly, it's an issue because it ties up our staff and prevents them from being available for a more serious call that might come in. But again, our time and our effort is money. And we've been exploring the possibility, as some communities have already, of instituting a system where perhaps there's a charge for that type of service. It's not a transport, it's an assist. And maybe that would, as you say, offset some of the cost of the fire department, some of the cost of the personnel. It might also prompt some of those facilities to take a different approach and handle those situations with their own staff, again, freeing up our department for more pressing matters, and, you know, allow them to focus on other issues. You know, chief, you have any more you want to say on that?
Oh, you covered it, ma'am. Thank you.
But thank you for explaining that. And again, the reason I brought it up is it's a perfect example, again, my opinion, it's taking advantage of our system, and one of two things are going to happen. Either they're going to do the right thing and pick Nana or Grandpa up and get them back into bed, or they're going to pay us. So, thank you.
Yeah, we want to emphasize facilities, not-
Right. Wouldn't want to talk about residents. And again, I'm sure there could be some type of deal that, just like false alarms, the first free, three are maybe free, and then, but I know you're going to the same place over and over. And that's not right, in my opinion. Thank you.
Chief, thank you for everything you and your men and women do to help our city keep us safe. Really appreciate it. Always listening to the scanner, constantly hearing the callouts for the fire department, for the ambulance especially. Do hear, hopefully, with that third ambulance possibly coming on, we'll see maybe less of an uptick of mutual aid calls that we'll need. So, looking forward to that. And thank you to the men and women that actually delivered the baby last week. Great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody?
Thanks, Clark.
Have a good night.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, everybody.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extend adjourn at 7:42.
Nice job, Chuck.